Look employee discipline and there's no action to report.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the, uh, close the closed session and open up the, uh, regular city council meeting of Tuesday, May 7th. Uh, can I have the roll call please, Liz? Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we will have a flag to this by Boy Scout Troop 119 after, um, a minute of silent prayer. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. Thanks. Color guard post colors. Audience at ease. Okay, Liz, could you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.c i.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphones in addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. On the agenda approval additions and and or deletions, at the council's pleasure, I'd like to move a few things around.
Yes.
Okay? I'd like to put, uh, after the youth committee annual report, I'd like to add the youth appointments to the youth commission. And then after our consent calendar, I'd like to move up the city clerk's, um, Measure R appointments and also the nonprofit funding. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, and are there any other additions, deletions? You pondering, Kurt?
Uh, just in the consent calendar, but we can wait for it.
Okay. All right, then, uh, we'll go right now to the Liberty Ranch High School students' environmental-related experiments regarding potential issues in the Galt area.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. Thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Haley Clement. I am an agriculture teacher at Liberty Ranch High School and I currently teach ag chemistry. And one of my goals for the classes was to make the class really adaptable, um, to agriculture and the environment. And so all the students in my classes do a science fair project. And this year we wanted to do some kind of environmentally related projects. And after receiving some grant funding, we're actually able to implement about 25 projects that were specifically geared towards environmental issues in Galt, California. And so I thought it'd be kind of fun to share the results of three of those projects with you today. So I have some students who are gonna present those results.
Hi, everyone, I'm Ronnie Duncan and I'm a commitee for here at IFLT.
Excuse me? I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you go to the microphone? We wanna make sure we get you on the record. Yeah, there's a portable one right there, either, any one of those.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this, okay.
That's perfect. Thanks.
Okay, so for my project, I investigated the presence of ions in Galt effluent water. So what I simply did is I went to the Galt wastewater treatment plant and I got a sample of effluent water. Effluent water is just water that's been sent from businesses and homes. That's been used in kitchens, bathrooms, and laundry rooms, different other, um, water outlets. So what I did was I got that sample, brought it back to my school, and I followed a simple procedure of testing this water for, um, different chemicals and ions such as chromate, phosphate, and lead. And what I did was I just combined them and it's a reaction formed and that's how I knew that, um, that's how I knew if the ion was present. After conduct, after conducting this, um, three times consecutively, I found that there were indeed no ions present in this water scene. That, that means that this effluent water is indeed, um, suitable for growing crops. The importance of my project significantly was just to show how, a friendly reminder of how farmers and agriculturists are constantly being innovative and innovative, innovative for our environment, using water which is a scarce product, um, reusing it is such a great way to just show the people and everyone else that farmers are being creative in ways to reuse such a scarce product. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whoops. That makes it easier to read that way, huh?
Hi, I'm Annika Slime and I'm in this commitee for here at-
Anybody outside have a black or a blue backpack, a dischuk backpack, like bag they should have with them, because they might have left outside? Got a shoulder strap on it? Thank you, I'm sorry, get rid of it.
No, thank you for interrupting us. Anytime for that.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Annika Slime and I'm in this commitee for here at ag chemistry class also. And I, for my project, I investigated the concentration of various tap water pollutants in Galt, California. And during some research for my project, I learned that tap water is the most used drinking water. And so I wanna see if the tap water in Galt, in Galt was indeed safe to drink. So for my project, I did, I gathered 10 samples from around Galt and I did a five chemical reaction tests. I tested for chlorine, copper, iron, harness, and pH. And after doing this experiment, I learned that the tap water was in the safe range for drinking. And I was able to conclude that the tap water in Galt is safe to drink.
Thank you.
Good job.
I got, I think you got some public work. People coming up the pipeline here.
Hi, I'm Haley. And I'm Annika Slime. Uh, our project was investigating urban and agricultural water effects on the Dry Creek in Galt, California. Um, this creek does run through many, uh, different cities, but we focused just on Galt, California, to see the effect that it has on different animals and because our farmers do use this creek for their animals to drink out of. So we wanted to see if it was affecting the way that our animals are drinking. Also, we wanted to see if the runoff in our community on this side of Galt, California is affecting, um, our creeks. Um, our hypothesis was that if Dry Creek's water was, if it was tested for phosphate, pH, ammonia, and nitrate, if it was polluted, and as a result, we found that it was met FDA's regulations for good water. Um, the way we found these results was we tested four different areas. Um, we did three different, uh, test, uh, samples and, um, they all met FDA regulations. So it is healthy for our animals to be drinking out of and, um, our runoff is not affecting our Dry Creek.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I guess, I guess, Mr. Winkler, you get to keep your job. Now, we have the community of character award. Are you gonna get that, Barbara?
I am.
Okay.
Be happy to. If Cole would join me at the podium, please. I'm going to read, uh, his, uh, his award. Uh, he is being awarded for integrity and as a member of the Galt City Council Youth Committee, Cole, can I say your last name right? Excuse me. Demonstrates leadership and integrity, setting the tone to accomplish real and heartfelt changes for the youth in our community. Cole is recognized by his teachers and coaches at Liberty Ranch High School as a person of integrity. One of Cole's teachers describes him as conscientious, hardworking, and exemplary of great integrity and honesty as a student. Cole's basketball coach, baseball coach, thanks, reports that Cole is an inspiring person who characterizes nearly every virtue of substance valued in a student, athlete, and human being. Cole is punctual, insightful, and never shy about helping others. He is unique among students and outstanding with regard to work ethic and character. Cole has devoted himself to academics by taking five advancement placement courses while constantly seeking to improve on the baseball field. Cole is an exemplary model for his peers and is to be commended for his commitment to the future and the profound impact he has had on those around him. Congratulations. Well, I want you to say what you're gonna do this summer. I'm not gonna let you get away without saying something.
Um, the first and second week of June, I'm going to West Point and Annapolis for a summer seminar. It's to get you introduced to the academies and see if you wanna go there or not. So-
Yeah. Good for you. Good for you.
And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Slime as well as, um, my teacher, Mr. Piles, and my baseball coach, uh, Mr. Warmer.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and now we're going to have an annual report from the Galt Youth Committee.
Good evening, how's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
How are you?
Thank you.
Doing well, thank you. Um, we are both members of the Galt City Council Youth Committee. I'm Rosita Travizo.
And I'm Kirishin Muzaki.
And tonight, we're gonna be giving you our annual report. This is why I'm gonna go myself. Okay. So, um, the activities that we've, um, hosted, um, the activities that we've hosted this year included a Halloween event of Spook Fest in October, um, crafting with Santa, um, in December. And we've also done, um, messages of love, um, valen, giving out Valentine's grams to the Golden Living Center. Um, and we've also held various fundraising events for the John Moran Scholarship.
Um, we're assisted with the farmers market for face painting, the Winter Bird Festival, which we also do face painting for. The extravaganza, we sold some cotton candy there. And at Dia de los Niños, we all had different jobs and mine was face painting.
Um, one of the events that we've held, it was a Halloween party in, uh, Spook Fest in October at the Jibola Center. It was for all ages. Uh, the cost was only $5. And this was a chance for the youth committee to give back to the community. It was a chance for, um, the youth to enjoy a safe and fun night, um, of Halloween. We had various events. Um, we had costume contents, co- contests and, um, trunk retreating and the police, um, was out there along, um, as with other community members with their trunks handing, handing out candy.
Um, crafting with Santa, there about 120 kids that came from, I think from kindergarten to around fourth grade. We had 41 volunteers. Um, the Galt High School drama performed a skit that the kids absolutely loved. Um, we had a lot of crafts and snacks that the kids could go to and if they ever needed a snack, they just told one of us. Um, we got photos with Santa, so a lot of the kids, that's what they really look forward to at the end of December. So also gave back to the community, helping some parents also go Christmas shopping while their kids are still being watched in a safe environment. And at a very low cost, the residents had a very special day.
Um, the next event that we went to, um, was, um, about Valentine's Day. It was February 10th of Saturday. Um, the youth committee, we, um, went to the Golden Living Center and we gave Valentine grams to, um, the elderly. Um, the messages that said were, um, on the paper were roses are red, bios are blue, the youth of Galt appreciate you. Um, it meant a lot for the residents to come and have, um, the youth committee, um, come and visit them. Um, there's some that don't have anyone to visit them, so it was just a good chance for them to, um, have someone to talk to. Um, and this also encouraged the youth to come out and do community service, um, involving the elderly.
Um, fundraising for the John Moran Scholarship. We have raised, um, 1,958 and 54 sets for the scholarship. We've had, uh, so many events. In the car wash, I wasn't on the committee yet, but I attended both yard sales. So we had the first yard sale at my neighbor's house across the street from Jackson Box. So that turned out really well and we sold a lot of stuff. And we have collected many donations from each of those events. Um, the seniors will be able to pursue higher education by getting the scholarship and the money could aid in purchasing books or other fees. So this scholarship will recognize seniors for their contributions to the community, community of Galt.
Um, and we just decided last meeting that the scholarship will be awarded, um, to a senior from Liberty Ranch, uh, one senior from Liberty Ranch, a senior from Galt High, and a senior from Esthulita High School. And in any case, that there is no applicant from either of the high schools, um, the scholarship that would be, that that student would be receiving would be split amongst the other two, so they all have an equal amount. Um, some guest speakers that we've had, um, was Sacramento County Supervisor Donna Toley, um, Galt City Attorney Steven Rudolph, um, Michelle Neely of the Finance Department, and TJ Godady of the Galt Police Department.
Um, you're learning guest speakers that taught us about the local government, especially the financial stuff, 'cause we're, we had some big issues with that. Proper cash handling procedures, meeting procedures, and the Brown Act, which is, um, not having, I think it's side conversations during meetings. Organize events by reach out, help other students get involved in leadership and communication skills within the community.
Um, we've had, um, some attendance issues this year. We've had a lack of participation from about, I believe there was one member. Um, we will be notifying them, um, of their absences, um, with a letter. And, um, if they do not respond, um, we will bring it up to the city council to, um, officially retire the member of their position.
Goals for 2013, 2014. Um, plans for that team year, we'll be planning our strategic plan for next year at our retreat at the Farland Ranch and looking at the State of the Youth in Galt on May 18th. And we have some guest speakers, Janet Munoz and John Duran. And we'll be getting, giving some awards to our five seniors. They'll be getting a plaque. And, um, the retreat is just to help build up some better skills that we need to have as a committee. So we'll also have the mentor training there and Barbara's idea was the State of the Youth Address. And that I'm really excited about, 'cause we're gonna list everything that we need to do and what our goals are for the year too.
And community service, um, we will, of the youth committee, we will continue to assist in, um, any community service that we possibly can. Um, I know next year, we probably will still continue with the Winter Bird Festival and also the Dia de los Niños along with the extravaganza. And these are our, uh, this is our mission statement. Um, we would like to encourage the youth to participate in activities in the community and to help build, um, better citizens. Um, encourage family participation, um, strive to emphasize diversity in our culture by emphasizing, um, interaction. Um, collaborate with organizations, um, devoted to, um, growing of youth and recognize that it takes all members of the community to sustain a betterment for the youth.
Um, though, is it, it is a challenge to break down the wall of competition that has been built. These activities and events are protective measures against negativity. Um, also, these events, these activities and events are highly beneficial to the community. It will help prevent bullying and graffiti, which is a big problem in Galt. It will also be an aid to eradicate the invisible division line, so like whites and Mexicans in Galt. It is also in the interest of uniting the youth of Galt, Liberty Ranch, Esthulita High. It gives a chance to open doors and encourage youth and a set of tools, helping the community.
So basically, yeah, um, we just, our purpose of the youth committee is to help, or to, um, serve the community of Galt in any way that we possibly can. And, um, we look forward to doing that again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Liz, or is it Barbara that's going to talk about the youth committee appointment?
I will do that.
All right.
Uh, as you may or may not know, um, the Galt City Council Youth Committee is an official, uh, committee for the city of Galt. And therefore, their membership has to be approved by this council. So I've given you, uh, copies of their applications. And at this time, I will ask those of you that are here to come forward to the podium and, um, we will then ask the council to approve your membership or they can ask any questions if, if they want to. I don't think they will, so don't worry. And then you will get, yeah, you might. Then you will get your official Galt City Council Youth Committee t-shirt. And Eric McCarty is one of the adult mentors. He will be handing those out. So, um, I'm gonna read the names and you just come on up here and join, uh, Eric. Hannah Hassy. Jessica Barraho, Barraho. Carrie Vang. Kristen Ferris. And Mandy Wilson. We have five seniors who are graduating and, um, these young people will be taking their place. And we try to select students from all the different grades. Um, I don't see Kristen here, but he will be, uh, the senior representative. So this is your new members for the Galt City Council Youth Committee. Uh, do you have any questions, council?
No, I, 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 I wanna commend you all on coming and doing service for your city. Uh, it's a good way to start off, getting involved in politics or community involvement. It does take a lot of time. You did some really great answers on your questions and, uh, I think, um, behalf of all of the city council, I'd like to welcome you.
So we're looking for a motion to approve this membership.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you very much.
Call for vote, please, Liz. Right to Mayor Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Okay, so you are now officially members of the Galt City Council Youth Committee and you can receive your t-shirt, official t-shirt.
Good job. Congratulations, yes.
Okay, um, now we're gonna go to the consent calendar, I think, councilmembers. Oh, wait, hold on, stop, public comments, please.
Under Government Code, Section 5495, 4.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to me. Um, Reuben Epstein.
My name is Reuben Epstein. I live in the city of Galt. I've been here about 36 years. A few weeks back, I ran into one of the people from the city council, a local restaurant, and started telling him about the problems that have been going on with redevelopment and my building on Fourth Street. And he said he was unaware of it. He thought maybe many of the other council members were. And he suggested that I put together something to, at least from my perspective, bring people up to speed. So I've put together a handout. I brought seven of them for city council members and the staff. And, um, to give you an idea of what things look like from where I am, which is not real pretty. And if, there's contact information here, if people have questions, you can ask now, you can ask later. I'm not gonna go into the details of all of this at the meeting. But as I say in here, it started out like a dream and it's turned into a nightmare. So it's not been fun. And, uh, while I was sitting here and I first came in, I thought of the old joke, you know, I'm from the government and I'm here to help you. And it sort of feels like that.
And I will point out that I did have a conversation with Reuben and, and suggested that he did bring the information, at least from his point of view, of the process that has occurred and how it's affected him, so I wanted the council to know.
Thanks, Reuben. So now we're gonna go to the consent calendar. Was there something that you wanted to, uh, poll, councilmember?
Yeah, I just had a question on item number four.
Okay, wanna, should we get to that first?
Sure.
Okay.
I looked at the report. Was there an engineer's estimate in there? 'Cause I noticed there was a big discrepancy between the bids. I mean, obviously, the low bid was a hundred thousand less than the, than the high bid and I was just curious as to what the engineer's estimate was.
Well, I do not believe, and it's an oversight on our part, that we did, we did not put our engineer's estimate in our staff report. We normally would do that and, uh, I apologize for that. Uh, our staff engineer is here. Trung, do you recall what the engineer's estimate was?
Two thirty.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So Falco was below us and we were in the ballpark with the second bidder.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. That was it.
Okay, so can we, uh, put it all together?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion through.
I got it.
Where you wanna put it?
And we'll, uh, call for the vote. Uh, Madam Mayor, do you wanna read the items into the agenda? Oh, uh, yeah.
All right. Okay, we have six items. The first one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of April 16th, 2013. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, approval of South County Transit Link Transit Suspension Appeals Process. Number four, award of contract for the East Street Lift Station Improvements Project. Number five, approval of the Bike Month Proclamation. And number six, authorization to submit funding applications for various infrastructure and capital improvement projects.
Okay, so the motion approves. Uh, move in second. Move for two seconds and can I call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Hey Liz, now, we're gonna go to the, um, committee and commissions appointment.
Okay, we have a vacancy on the Measure R Committee. This vacancy is an appointment to be made by councilmember Cruz. We do have one letter of interest from, uh, Mr. Patel. And at this time, I would like to ask, um, either approval of the appointment or direction given to staff.
From me?
From you.
Actually, I, I have, uh, talked and worked with Mr. Patel and I am very impressed with his, his zeal. He's also worked with councilmember Payne and Singleton, so I wholeheartedly recommend him in the position.
Singleton. Singleton. Sounds like Singleton.
Yeah, he's not here.
I'm gonna say Singleton.
to the McFarland Ranch Living, McFarland Living History Ranch. Last year, the council directed staff to develop a policy and application process that would allow all Galt 501(c)(3) organizations to apply for the funding, and the city council adopted this policy in March of two thousand twelve. This year, staff prepared the, uh, the application process. We informed all known Galt nonprofits for the funding availability. We advertised in the Galt Herald, and we also placed the application on the city's website. The city actually received nine applications, four of which were eligible as, um, 501(c)(3) organizations. Those four organizations are Horizon Community Church, uh, for their Harvest Carnival event on Halloween or during the Halloween period, uh, the Galt Seventh Day Adventist Church for a Color of Health 5K Fun Run, the Galt Historical Society for a barn raising at McFarland Living History Ranch, and Project Love to increase the number of meals provided to the Galt homeless from once a week to the last Saturday of the month and on a more frequent basis. So this time, I'm asking council to review the, the funding request applications and make a funding determination. Some alternatives would be to award the entire ten thousand dollars to one organization, to distribute the ten thousand dollars or a portion thereof to two or more organizations, or don't award any funding at all. So it's, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can we ask a question of the representatives that is here?
I believe I see the groups out there, at least four groups.
Uh, and I see the, the one speaker sheet, so are, are the rest of you going to talk on your, uh, speak on your grant?
And I would suggest at this time, and maybe I would defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, um, Mayor, my recommendation is, since you have the four groups, is that, uh, in the order presented by the city clerk, you give each group, uh, a representative of each group, uh, three or five minutes to come up and, uh, um, make a presentation to the council. So the first item on the, for the first group listed is the Horizon Community Church, followed by the Galt Seventh Day Adventist Church, followed by the Galt Historical Society, followed by Project Love.
Okay, um, is there someone from the Horizon that would like to speak? Uh, the Seventh Day Adventist Church? Okay, so we're moving around Al Balvin. I guess you're going to speak for the Historical Society?
Good evening. We seem to be the only ones showing up here, and they, we want the money bad.
And it's free, start out.
We have our...
Now, now, before, uh, while, while they're trying to get up, I do wanna let council know, each of the organizations, um, each of the nine organizations was contacted by phone to let them know the hearing would be tonight.
And Project Love is here, too.
Don't ever limit me to five minutes to talk about McFarland. I could talk for the rest of my life. Most of you present in this room have had some experience with McFarland. If you haven't, you've missed a lot. I can still remember well the first time I went out and saw youngsters doing things like making candles and putting together corn husk dolls and panning for gold and, and doing all these things that they read about but never actually had seen. One of the things that struck me at one particular point, there was a, a father there who was a farrier, and he had brought, uh, a, a complete branding iron, equipment, everything with him, and each of the children had made stools, and so as they walked up with their stool, he put the hot branding iron on the stool, and one little girl said, "Ooh, that hurts." And for the first time, she was realizing the reality of what branding really meant. You know, we see it on TV, we look at pictures, we read about it, but she got the reality of what it meant to that animal. And this is what it's all about, and we open up the door of the classroom to all these children, an average of three thousand a year, for the people of Galt. On top of that, we are now opening it to families for family reunions, to young brides for weddings, and for so many more things. And as we have the capability to do it, this will become more and more a wonderful place for the entire community of Galt to be able to enjoy. My goal, my dream, is someday that that whole area will be just another Galt park. That was why, when we wrote the contract with the county initially, we made it very clear that we weren't gonna put in all those hours of work without a clause in our contract that said we have right to first refusal, and that when we have it, it must be given to us at the fair market price. So when that comes about, it could very well be that for as little as one dollar, Galt will have another beautiful park. So, to me, this is the most beautiful gift that we could possibly give our community, and everything we're trying to do in it is for the people of Galt. That's all I can ask for. That's all we can dream of. We need that little barn shed so badly. If we could get that taken care of, that would be the step, the first phase in eventually completing the barn. And the barn is very close to done, I mean, the, the ranch is very close to done, but we have to go by steps as we have the funds, and this is where we are. If it's possible, and if it's at all within the range of the, um, plans that you have, I certainly would ask that the city of Galt continue to be the wonderful support that you have always been for us. I would be more than happy to answer any questions, if you have any. I know people have said, "Well, is it, is it flood control, or are you, have you, are you protected? Have you done everything?" We are required by the county to do DARA and, uh, SEQA, and all of you people in the city know all those things. I don't know what they're all about, but they know DARA and SEQA. We have to do all these different tests, and we have to make sure that everything we put out there is properly built to meet all the necessary standards. So, once again, when you get it, and I hope someday it'll be a part of Galt, it's gonna be everything done right, and it will be if we have the cash to do it. If not, we won't be able to. I'd hate to see it go back to the county now. No way. Come on, help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie. You guys do a great job.
Okay, next would be Project Love. I know they're here.
Well, um, I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Kevin Hardcourt, and it's my wife Donna Hardcourt, and it's truly an honor to be standing here. It's been a long time since I stood at this podium. I used to be a fire captain here in the city, and my wife was administrative assistant for the fire department in the, for the city of Galt. Um, it's a, it's been a passion of ours. We started Project Love. Um, we saw such a need with the, the economy, the way it has been, and, and there's so many folks in town that are, have gone without, and we felt if we, we stood up and, um, and just did something that was beyond what normal people do, we started a trailer that, uh, feeds, um, we have, we feed approximately seventy people a week now. Um, we have, uh, showers in it, a beautician salon, we provide food, uh, bags of groceries, um, and, and a, a sense of community as, as we, we gained the volunteers from all, from all the different areas of, uh, the city, and people come every week. I, I don't ever ask anybody to help for Project Love, because it's always provided. People are always there, and it's amazing. Um, there's some great stories that came out of Project Love. We've, there's, um, one individual that lived into the, um, under the bridge. He, he's now, we helped him relocate in Kentucky, and he is now has, married, has a kid, has a job, and is serving in a church now. Um, it's just a success that actually is just giving somebody a hand and getting them out of there, and somebody needs to do this. And, um, I think it's a unique service that we, we offer. I think, uh, the cities should be proud of it. I'm, I'm proud that, I'm honored that you guys would even consider us for this grant. Um, we don't even know where, um, we don't have any funding. Our money comes out of thin air. I think God just provides the money, and we always have enough money to feed whoever comes. Um, you know, we have, take donations of clothes, so basically we set up clothes every week, and this is just not for the homeless. It's for the people of Galt. It, I, I don't have to, you don't have to fill out a form to eat dinner, or there's no, it's open to anybody. If you wanted to come and have dinner, you're welcome to come and have dinner. I, I, lots of times I rock, knock, we have extra food, and I go knock on doors and invite just the, the public to know what's happening in their city, 'cause it's awesome. It's awesome to see people reaching out to other people, and I just thank you guys for considering us.
Thank you.
Oh, Kevin, before you leave, in your, um, uh, presentation, um, I was trying to understand, you started out as Fire Safe back in two thousand four?
We, um, a, a lot of you guys are familiar, um, we're, actually, we're Fire Safe America, and I don't, I haven't, like, told everybody what exactly the, Project Love is a humanitarian aid and disaster response. We only have one now, but when we have fifteen of them, one in different cities around here, and when we can respond to ourselves, our own problems, without relying on the government to come in, is we're gonna have a response system. So in San Francisco, you know, whatever, we have a big earthquake or a flood, Project Love will be there in an instant. Just get on the phone, "Hey, Kev, we need you there," and, and it's, we're gonna be there. And so that's where, basically, Fire Safe America is broken into, um, Project Love, Project Quake, uh, Project Quake, and Fire, uh, Project Life Safety. And Project Life Safety, as we all experienced in this town, we used to have, um, public education for our children in the schools, and we had a wonderful trailer that traveled around, and we taught our children how to get out of a fire. Um, I've developed a thing called the Life Safety Center. That's something that you're gonna see in our city in the future, and funding like this is, puts us a little bit farther forward. But we have to work on one project at a time to reach the, we have some big goals, and, uh, just thank you for considering it. But that's, that's kinda how, how it's called Fire Safe America. That's the parent, and, um, and Project Love's just a little child part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anyone else that's fit for the speakers, so I'll close? Seventh Day Adventist or Horizon?
Yes. Okay. So I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and then council members, what are your thoughts on this? If anyone would like to go first, who would like to go first?
Well, I wasn't here, I wasn't here when the changes were made. I, I wasn't here. But, but I was, um, I was a staff member when the city entered, didn't enter into, well, we did enter into a contract, I guess, of sorts with the Historical Society as it related to, uh, the revenues that were generated from the, um, SOFCOM lease on the water tower in town. And, and I remember back then, although I don't think it was ever put into writing, that the, the council made a promissory commitment to provide funding to, ongoing and annual funding to the Historical Society for purposes of rehabilitating the, um, McFarland Ranch. And it, it isn't a written contract, but it's, it's, uh, I find it disappointing that, that the city, because people change, that that commitment is now, um, questioned. Um, but what I, I think there are other alternatives, uh, that we can address tonight, and I know that, uh, Liz has set some forth, but I think there's another one there that's not listed, and that is, I think the city should fulfill its commitment with Historical Society, and I think we can identify other funding sources, such as the other cellular leases that we have, either at the wastewater treatment plant or at the MSC, 'cause there are two contracts at each one. Now, I don't know offhand whether revenues are restricted from the water treatment plant because of its location, but I know that the, um, revenues, I believe the revenues at the MSC, and there are two contracts there, where revenue is generated based on, you know, a very small area of rental space, and that, those monies could be used in addition to, to fund, uh, above the ten thousand dollar limit, which obviously would then provide additional funding, uh, to some of these other organizations. And I guess lastly, I'd like to say, I think all of the, uh, proposals are, are worthy. I mean, they, they all, um, touch various portions, portions of the community and serve a very useful purpose. So I, I just kinda throw that out for, for council to think about and maybe discuss.
Could, um, Jason, um, could you reiterate again what is going on with the funding from that tower and where other funding is coming, because we, uh, received more than ten thousand dollars for that, uh, tower, and now we're not, we're only receiving ten thousand. Could you kind of explain that to us, uh, where the other money went, and, um, where we're losing that money from, if it's not going to be there anymore?
Sure. We, we had a, a contract with SOFCOM to rent the water tower, and it was about, I think, twenty-three thousand dollars a year, if I remember correctly, in the, in the last year, and about a month or two ago, um, we entered into a new contract with SOFCOM, which significantly reduced that rent down to just about, just slightly less than ten thousand dollars a year. Um, that went into effect in March, and so that significantly reduced that, that, uh, ongoing revenue for the city. Kurt is right, we do have other cell, cellphone, um, cell tower leases around the city that are, that generate various amounts of money. All that money does go into the city general fund, so it's just considered another funding source. Um, the council was interested in, eh, expanding, uh, revenue or funding for nonprofits. It would simply just come out of the general fund, wouldn't necessarily come from any of the designated leases. It just gets load lumped in with all the other, general fund is not restricted in any way, it just becomes a funding, another funding source from the general fund, and the council, um, certainly has a discretion of how the general fund is used in the city. Uh, the, the, if the council wanted to appropriate additional funds, I would have to come back at a later date. There's, the only amount that's actually in the budget currently, and it's been appropriated is ten thousand dollars. So we'd have to come back at a subsequent meeting, potentially at the, uh, the budget hearing, which is scheduled for May twenty-eighth, and have that discussion.
Well, I personally don't want any more money coming out of the general fund, seeing, seeing some of the things that we are facing and what some of our employees are facing, uh, just, I personally don't wanna see the general fund touched with anything. Um, and, uh, we, I'm not trying to think that I'm against the Historical Society. I'm not. I think they're a great group. I understand that. I come from a nonprofit myself, so my, my thought on that was, and has always been, that we did not have an MOU with the Historical Society, did we? That we were going to always give them ten grand? It was just, I guess, a gentleman's handshake, and in a lot of places, that's, you know, correct, but, um...
There was, there was an initial agreement, I believe, for five years. Uh, that, that's, that's no longer in effect.
So the year, the five years are out of effect, so with that money, we've given them fifty thousand so far, or more, because the five...
I don't know what the total is. I think we've done... some of the things that we are facing and what some of our employees are facing. Just, I personally don't want to see the General Fund touched with anything. And we, I'm not trying to think that I'm against the Historical Society. I'm not. I think they're a great group, I understand that. I come from a nonprofit myself, so my thought on that was, and has always been, that we did not have an MOU with the Historical Society, did we? That we were going to always give them ten grand? It was just, I guess, a gentleman's handshake, and in a lot of places, that's, you know, correct, but...
There was, there was an initial agreement, I believe, for five years. That's no longer in effect.
So the five years are out of effect. So with that money, we've given them fifty thousand so far, or more.
I don't know what the total is. I think we've done since, I think it expired a couple of years ago, and we've given at least one or two more years on just annual one-year funding agreements. So I don't know what the total is.
And then with all things that happen, you know, we're losing money now on that. It used to be okay, we're getting twenty-three grand, now we're only getting ten. So we're actually even taking a hit on that cell tower as a city now.
Well, I think you have to look back at the original, because I think the escalators in that lease got it up to twenty-three. And I don't know how many years that lease has been in existence, but it's been, I'd say, close to ten years possibly.
Oh, well, it started out...
And it was at like five percent annual increase. So I'm thinking, you know, it has really grown, the amount of revenue. So I don't think we've lost money. We may have gone back down to closer to what the original terms were.
Okay.
But real money, yes, we did, because we lowered the contract.
Yeah. Okay. Any more thoughts, anyone else? I mean...
Well, yeah, I'll talk. What I'd like to see us do is split that ten thousand with five thousand going to the Historical Society, and five thousand going to Project Love. I think, you know, we have a lot of things to offer in this community, but if we can't offer some help to the homeless, I think we need to do the best we can. I think if we split it, it'll help the Historical Society with their barn, and I understand it's necessary, but also in my heart feel like we also have to worry about feeding people that don't have food. And I do know that, I've seen Kevin and his trailer all over town, wherever he's needed, he shows up. And I'm confident that what they're trying to do, they are doing. You know, they say they're feeding people, they're providing clothes, showers, whatever. And that's a big, that's a big deal, too. So my preference would be that we split the ten thousand between the two charities. I think all the projects are good. I think the Harvest Carnival and all those play an important part in our community, but I think you have to kind of set your priorities. So that would be my desire.
Does anybody else have different desires?
I would tend to lean towards what Barbara was saying.
I had the same thought as Barbara has, but I was getting, my thought was more about seventy-five hundred to the Historical Society and twenty-five hundred to Project Love. Based on community involvement and years in service, and so that's kind of where I was at.
That's fine. I just would like to see both of them get some...
Councilmember Singleton?
And myself, I was originally thinking, you know, let's do what's fair, and that's kind of what we, why we changed things, because we want to make everything balanced and fair to everybody. So I was thinking, let's just give all four of them, split it. But now hearing other council, I gotta tend to agree with Ms. Payne, that does seem to make more sense to me, and to split it, five thousand for the Historical Society and Project Love. That's what I have in mind.
Okay, so we've got two thoughts.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, which one?
I would move that we fund the Historical Society seventy-five hundred and Project Love twenty-five hundred.
Right, second. Call for the vote, Liz. Sorry.
So we're deviating from the five thousand each, that's the seventy-five hundred for the Historical Society?
Yes, I was in agreement, well, first with Ms. Payne, but then second with the mayor.
Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Carrie, seventy-five hundred for the Historical Society and twenty-five hundred for Project Love.
There was a lot of people, and I thought that was going to be, yay for us. So now we're at the treasurer's report.
All right, Mr. Mayor, city council members, the first item I have from the treasurer's office is just the treasurer's report for March two thousand thirteen. There's only four things I want to bring to your attention. And we talked about, you know, the amount of revenue, or I should say, the lack of the amount of revenue that's going into the General Fund, and I'm afraid this is no different. In the fact, on the last page of treasurer's report, for the first three months, the entire city of Galt earned just a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars in interest. In, I'll say, more prosperous years, that amount would be about one and a half million dollars. So this year, this fiscal year, it's only a little bit over two hundred thousand. So, you know, when, Madam Mayor, you talked about, you know, you don't want to pull any more out of the General Fund, and I completely agree, but you have less going into the General Fund, too. Okay? The few other things is, I will tell you that Premier West Bank and a firm out of Spokane, Washington, called American West Bank have officially merged. The new name now is, the legal name is American West Bank. You'll be seeing the signs change here within a couple of months. Doesn't change anything that we have as far as investments, the one investment that we have there. We have, for the month of March, the city earned a half percent of interest collectively, weighted, on a weighted average. And that's, when you keep the investment safe, liquid, and then you get the best yield you possibly can, a half is what we can get. Okay? And lastly, we do have, we always talk about shopping local and investing local, we do have a little bit over fourteen million dollars invested in Gulf Bank. Most of it in farmers and merchants, a little bit in American West Bank. So with that, I'll ask for your approval for the treasurer's report for March two thousand thirteen.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And we're back to you again.
Yep. The next item is that it is the investment policy for the fiscal year of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Every year, by California Government Code, I need to bring this in front of you for review. And that's what you have here tonight. Now, I will tell you that I've made a lot of, I'll say, just verbiage changes. Here's a little bit of background behind it. I'm involved with the California Municipal Treasurers Association, which the acronym is CMTA. About eighteen months, and I'm also on, I'm on their executive board. About eighteen months ago, I developed a program for CMTA that allows any California city, any California district, to send in their investment policy to CMTA, and I'm the chairperson of that program. And then what happens is, I get that investment policy, I then send it out to three different individuals within our organization, and they read it, I'll say, critique it, put a scoring mechanism to it, and if it passes a certain score, then it becomes certified. So it's a very, I think, distinct characteristic of that investment policy, so that your investment policy is certified by CMTA. It's a very, I think, a high distinction. In the history, or I should say, the brief history, I've seen some really, honestly, I've seen some real bad investment policies, and I've seen some real good ones. And so what I did about a month ago was, I took the best, a couple of the best investment policies I read and saw, and incorporated those changes into ours. Because after reading those, you know, ours was good, but it could be better. So that's what you have in front of you tonight, I want to say, is, in my opinion, the best of the best as far as the verbiage changes of the investment policy are concerned. Now, having said that, there are two changes, which I think are significant changes that I want to bring to your attention, and they're probably the biggest changes. If you look at the investment policy specifically on page five, section nine, it's called Authorized and Suitable Investments. There's two items that I added here, and what this is for the audience's benefit, is this lists what all the permitted investments that, as treasurer, that I can make for, on behalf of the city. So the two that I added is, the very first one is the registered state warrants, or bonds, I should say, of the state of California. So in other words, if it seems to be a good investment, I can actually go out and buy state of California bonds. Now, I cannot go beyond five years, and nor can I invest thirty percent, more than thirty percent of the portfolio. This is already approved by California Government, Section Code fifty-three six oh one. So it's only, I'm just simply including it in our investment policy. It's already been, it's already a law on the books. The other item is the next item down, and that is that it gives me the authorization, if it ever comes up in the future, to purchase our own bonds. So our own City of Galt bonds. Let's say the City of Galt wishes to issue a bond, and I'll say of the wastewater treatment plant, and they're going to go out to the market for a term of five years and pay, let's say, four percent. Okay? Which, in today's world, that's wonderful. Okay? It gives us the ability to go out and actually purchase those bonds. Why pay someone else four percent? We can just basically pay ourselves that four percent. So it's a good, solid investment. Again, it is also already authorized and approved by the state of California under Section Code fifty-three six oh one. So it just simply, these two items simply gives me, as treasurer, the authorization to do that if the right situation arises. As I said, those are the more, the most significant changes to this, I'll say, revised investment policy. I think that's it. So I'll ask for your approval, and I'll answer any questions that you have regarding this investment policy.
Any questions, anyone? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any more discussions? Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Nice to see you once in a while.
Yeah. Thank you.
Now, we're on to the city manager's office, and it's Officer Kevin Ton Memorial and Jason DeWoo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My honor presents to you this evening. This is the third or fourth time, I think, we brought this item back to the council. Back, as you will recall, Officer Kevin Ton was fatally shot while on duty back in January fifteenth. Since that time, there's been considerable interest and effort relating to dedicating some type of permanent memorial in his honor. Vice Mayor Singleton initially brought up the idea of having a dog park built and dedicated in his memory. That was presented, a couple of different dog park options were presented to the city council in March. Those were discussed. It was decided to send that back to the Parks and Recreation Committee for discussion and input prior to council making any decisions. Parks and Rec Commission suggested that a subcommittee be appointed, of two Parks and Rec Commissioners and two city council members. That came back to the city council, and the council agreed with forming that subcommittee, which was done. Members of the subcommittee included Vice Mayor Singleton, Councilmember Cruz from the city council, and from the Parks and Rec Commissioner, Commissioner Ruthinger, and...
More.
More. Thank you. There was a meeting held on April twenty-fourth. Approximately fifteen people showed up, some staff members, members of the community and public, as well as the four appointees to that subcommittee, showed up. They had a very good discussion, a lot of good inputs, and ideas were formed at that meeting. The dog park options were discussed, and some of there were some concerns that had been raised early on at council meetings, as well as in the Parks and Rec Commission, about some, about the cost, about the location, interference with the ballgames and the families and stuff that played out there, and some other things. So the group threw out about seven or eight different options for memorials in different locations. And the group finally settled on a preferred option of having a memorial here at City Hall, right behind, on the front side, what do you want to call it, the backside of the front side, but up here on the corner, close to the building underneath the trees, there might be a good opportunity to create some type of a memorial plaza in dedication in memory of Officer Ton. But the group also discussed widening that memorial to not only the memory of Officer Ton, but any officer that may in the future be killed in the line of duty, or military officer who may die in a line of duty, and with the ability to expand that and have that as a memorial, an ongoing memorial plaza for those types of events that may occur within the city in the future. And the group unanimously approved that idea and that recommendation, and asked that I bring that forward to the city council this evening for kind of official vetting and see if the city council agree with that recommendation. Some of the specific things that the group discussed that they might like to see included in that memorial, included things such as seating area, a fountain, a reflection pool, potentially an artist-commissioned statue, a memorial wall, some type of stepping stone or pavers. These could all be fundraising opportunities. The committee also had a great idea, and they recommended that the city approach the Galt High School Best Engineering Program, which is an award-winning engineering program about doing some conceptual design for the project. And since that meeting, I've reached out to Deborah Crane, as well as the superintendent and the principal, and they've expressed interest in helping the city in doing some conceptual designs. The end of the year is fast approaching, so I spoke with her actually just yesterday. We've been in communication prior to that. And so if the council is interested in moving forward with that, her and the students are very interested in having, getting that started. They were interested in having some of the committee members attend a meeting with the students during their classroom setting next week, in order to discuss and further vet some of the ideas and concepts, and then have the kids come up with some different ideas and things that they could come back and present to the city council at a future That would be conceptual design, it would still require, if the council agreed or liked that conceptual design, it would require us to come back later and actually do the hard design work in order to allow us to actually go out to construction for the project. But that would be something that would be done at a later date, once we've identified the funding for the project. There's another group that's been formed, they're in the process right now, forming a nonprofit at which they will be able to fundraise for this. And they've got, they had a meeting, actually, that I attended a week ago, and I know they've got upcoming meetings where they've got a lot of different things planned in the coming year to raise funds for this memorial plaza, because it's not going to be cheap if it's done, I think, in the way that the council would like. It could cost upwards of a hundred thousand dollars or more, depending on, you know, how and what exactly ultimately comes out of the design. We'll know more once we get the conceptual designs. We can then start to put some cost estimates associated with it and figure out what it's going to take. But it's going to be a big effort, and it's going to take a while to do the fundraising. But there's a very active and energetic group, made up of some city employees, as well as non-city employees, that are willing and eager to take on that challenge. So if the council agrees tonight to move forward with this new concept of developing memorial plaza here at City Hall, then that will kind of give them the green light to continue to do what they're doing, and give the green light for the high school to start to put together some conceptual designs for this concept. So the recommendation is that the council approves this recommendation from the council and Parks and Recreation Commission, a hot committee, to initiate the process of developing memorial plaza adjacent to City Hall. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good qualification here, because I know it's missing words when you said fire, sorry, police department and military, but we included all first responders, including fire department, correct?
That's true. Yep, very true.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep, you got it.
And let me just say, there is a lot of fundraising going on out there. You may not even see, even Robin from our finance department is putting on a five K run.
Five K runs.
And Lynn Hutchins from Police Department is selling shirts, t-shirts, she'll be doing at Strawberry Festival, any festival they can get to. They're selling bracelets, a lot of things.
There's actually going to be, coming up in the next couple of weeks, what they're calling a Stuff the Dog House event, instead of the Stuff the Booth that you see sometimes for the firefighters, where there are going to be different locations around the city where they're going to be seeking donations.
So, you know, Mr. Bearman says...
So, you know, when Mr. Bearman says, oh, a hundred thousand dollars, you know, maybe two hundred a year. There are a lot of people out there trying to raise funds, so it will not be a huge cost to the city. We're trying to make sure that we can recover any costs at the city map for that, so it's a very worthwhile cost.
And I have to say that I think that there's grants out there that you can get when it's associated with safety personnel and memorials.
Oh, you know how to fill that.
Yeah, I think it's really something that you should look into.
Yeah.
I did do a park in Sacramento, so, yeah.
Did the parents volunteer for that?
Yeah. We're doing that now.
Yeah, no, but there is.
Yeah, and you're volunteering?
Well, that would put three of us off from the committee.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, but you can...
I'll figure something out.
I think the concept's great.
I do, too.
And the idea of engaging the high school students is also good. I think it was a good outcome and a good idea to start with and thank you, Vice Mayor Singleton, it was a good idea.
I was just going to say, thank you for suggesting it. Think back to...
Oh, I just, I think it's a good outcome and it was great.
It was a good, a good suggestion. Thank you very much for that. We have good, good...
Yeah, so it sounds like you have a lot of city employee involvement and community involvement, and that's awesome.
Yeah, that's good.
So, do we need to...
Well, I was going to move, I was going to move the recommendation.
Second, I'll second. Third.
Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to Armando with Schools Out, the Academic Recreation SOAR Summer Program.
Evening, Mayor and city council. In August of two thousand and twelve, city council approved funding for the Schools Out Academic and Recreation After School Program, known as SOAR, for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. As we draw closer to the end of the school year, staff has received many requests from parents for a SOAR summer program. Staff at this time is requesting funding to provide a ten-week SOAR summer program that would run seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, June tenth through August sixteenth. The site yet has not been determined. We are working with the elementary school district to finalize one. I know in the report we indicated Marengo Ranch, but they're going under some construction there in the areas in the building we wanted to use. So, right now, we're, we'll find another school to go to. The fee, the fee will be, for the program will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars per week. And we went by week, so, you know, families take vacations, they're not stuck paying for a whole month. You know, the commitment is a week, so they could skip a week in case they had to go out of town. And I, the expenditures would be thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, with revenues estimated at thirty-seven, five hundred. That's based on thirty students. We put out a sign-up sheet and interest sheet at all three current SOAR locations and we have a total of forty-three parents that are interested in having students attend the summer SOAR program. So, we believe we should be able to hit that thirty student mark easily. It'll be available for students first grade through sixth. So, and if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions, but I know the program's doing really well and because it's doing so well, that's why you're able to have a summer program too. So, I need to commend you on the staff for all the work you've done on these programs.
Thank you. We put it together at the last minute in August, but I'm really happy with it and I think it's doing really great and I think it'll just continue to grow. Also, I'd like to thank the elementary school district for hosting us on their sites.
Well, that's great. Any more discussion, council members?
I would just make a comment. I have talked with some of the parents and they love the program and they also love the staff members, the teachers. So, I just thought we'd give them a little pat on the back for doing a great job.
Yeah, it's a good program. Okay, do we have a motion now?
We have a motion.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
So, now we're going to adjourn to the Galt, adjourn the city council and reconvene the Galt Successor Agency. So, roll call, please. Board members, Singleton?
Present.
Payne?
Here.
Champion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Public comments, are there any?
I have no speakers.
Okay. So, the information, is there information and consent calendar, it's the minutes, and the successor agency warrants? Do I have a motion?
Vote to accept.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're going to adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the city council. And we've already done the city clerk's report, so we now are at comments by staff.
Mayor, I'll be at the League of City Attorney Conference Wednesday through Friday of this week and will be checking email and available by phone if anybody needs me.
Okay. Anyone else?
This Saturday from nine to two is our annual safety day. We're inviting all the parents to bring their kids out, have a bicycle rodeo, have the Coast Guard coming, Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department's bringing their Bearcat and some other things, so it should be a good event, it was last year. And my assistant cook, Armando, will be cooking hot dogs for the event. Is that Walker Park?
No.
Community Park.
Community Park, okay.
What time is that starting in?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. And if I can add, because I just got word on my email that we will have a few bikes to, I'm not sure how you do that, to win, however you win. We'd have some bikes.
We thank you for that. We end up raffling them, is what we do.
Raffle, okay. We do have a few bikes that we'll be raffling.
Thank you very much.
Any other staff? Okay, comments by the city council members, we'll start with you, Barbara.
I attended with Deborah Crane and the high school superintendent, a conference in Sacramento called Convergence, and the speaker there talked about pathways to prosperity. And the theme was, we need to start thinking of jobs for those that maybe are not going to go to college. And it's interesting, when I was interviewing the prospective youth members, asking what their concerns were, and that kept coming up, their concern about their future. So, hopefully from that conference, we're going to bring back some ideas for our youth and I think Galt's known for taking care of their youth, so I think it'll be good.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the dates of it, when is it?
We just had it.
Oh, you just had, okay.
Yeah, so I've been there, been there, done there.
Okay. We'll go with Councilmember Cruz? We'll just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, first I want to beg your indulgence for missing last meeting, I was quite a ways away, but I wanted to just let you know that the cap, the cap went very well for my first time out. Although money is tight within the federal government, there are certain agencies out there that are willing to give it if you jump through the right hoops. Hopefully, some of those monies will be coming our way shortly.
Good, and I know you represented us well, so thank you for going.
Did wear out a good pair of shoes.
Got a couple of listers too, I heard.
Oh, major.
Councilmember Champion?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Singleton?
We had a LAFCO meeting last week, which I had chair because Jimmy Y was unable to make it. It went very well. The part was on the agenda was real Linda, they're having some issues, but we'll deal with that, trying to help them. And then, of course, the expansion of Elk Grove and their almost eight thousand acres that they want to annex into their city limits. And most, we had a lot of public comment on that. It was pretty well balanced, two and four, not, not really, don't want it. So, it turned out to be a fairly long meeting, but I expected it with the comments that I'm getting from Elk Grove residents. And I also attended another meeting, a city meeting, the one I told Councilman Champion about, for the public cheering over at Barbara, Watford, the pool over there, ballroom.
The community center.
Community center over there, ballroom, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's like, what?
The retirement dinner.
Who?
I was trying, I thought you said a public meeting and I'm thinking...
It was a public meeting. No, I'm talking about for the public to give comment, additional comment, and I had LAFCO staff there to answer their questions for the SOI expansion for the Elk Grove.
Oh.
In Elk Grove, a meeting in Elk Grove.
In Elk Grove.
Okay, I get you.
All right. And again, I think there were like thirty people there and it went, it went fairly well. And that's about all I have.
I have something. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Singleton and I attended last week the Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial Celebration. You know, it's a beautiful area in a park, which it's this big sphere and it has all these pedestals in it with officers' names that were killed in the line of duty in Sacramento. And it was, God, it was a great ceremony. It was really right on time, there were so many officers there, you know, they had the walking of the horse without the rider and that's really touching and the helicopters that three go and one goes off. And while Councilmember, Vice Mayor Singleton and I were sitting there, they announced that next year that they are going to put a pillar up there for Officer Kevin Ton. And so, it was mentioned quite a few times in the ceremony and so I thought that would be a great thing that we could bring back and tell all of you tonight. So, that was really great news and I think on that wonderful note, we'll close.
It was a surprise, we had no idea.
Madam Mayor, are we going to, we're going to read adjourn?
We're going to adjourn to closed session.
We're going to read...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we are going back to closed session.